It's being ordered. Today is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. This is a Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. And again, thank you all for being here today. Mayor Protem, do you have any announcements?
I don't think so. I hope you all had a wonderful Fourth of July. It was nice to kind of be back to normal and experience some of the wonderful Fourth of July events here in the city of Prescott. Other than that, welcome. It's great to see so many folks out in the audience.
All right, today we have an invocation from Pastor Jesse Burke with Sanctuary Covenant Church and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Tenney.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for your love for us. We thank you for the many gifts and blessings you've put in our lives, including the wonderful blessings of living in this nation, in this state, and in this town. And as this council gathers here together to, to carry out the, the very real and great honor and duty of governing this town, Lord, we just ask that you be here and in this place. We invite you and we ask that you give wisdom, that you give peace, that you give patience, that you give direction and, and just all your blessings on, on these people here gathered here today. And so we ask that you just be present, that you guide them, that you help them with your wisdom, rule these people, rule this town, and rule this area well. So we just ask you your blessings over this proceedings, blessings on these leaders, and keep them safe and keep them, their hearts and their minds pure. Praise your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you Pastor Burke. Let's please call all.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Singh.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenney.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member would like to pull from the consent agenda? Councilmember Bruce Singh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull item 6B concerning the worm, and also item 6F, including the Willdan Engineering contract. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? If not, will entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 6A through 6E excluding B.
Second.
I just went through E.
Did it again.
She, she's on top of it. We have a motion and second. Please vote. Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you for that. Let's go to item B. Councilmember Bruce Singh?
Thank you. The reason why I pulled it is it involves water and also the worm. And I was asking that maybe city staff could give us an update and let us know what's happening.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Rowich with Public Works. Herb Dishlip is the consultant that the city hired in 2018. He created and helps us maintain the Water Resource Management Model. That particular model shows us where water is actually being used and how much water is actually being used. And it assists us in the management of our water portfolio. Right now, Mr. Dishlip is assisting us with the update to the city's decision and order, which we are required through, we're required through ADWR to update it prior to December 31st of this year. Yeah, he's been assisting us with taking, extracting data from the model and creating an information database specifically for our ADWR submittal for the decision and order update. He works for us on an hourly basis. This is the second contract amendment. The first contract was for $50,000. The second contract amendment, or the first contract amendment was for an additional $25,000. And this is the second contract amendment for $50,000. Again, we pay him on an hourly basis when we need him to do work. He doesn't work for us on a consistent basis.
So will this be for like maybe the next year, do you think?
Um, I, I would say because of the DNO update, it would probably be for the next year to two years, depending on the, the number of hours. He's already put in a significant amount of time on the DNO update under the current contract.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can I entertain a motion at this time?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item B.
Well, I have a motion and second. Please vote. Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move down to item F. Councilmember Bruce Singh?
Thank you. The reason why I pulled this is so we could have a discussion about our building permitting process. As I understand, Willdan was hired, was it last year?
2020.
Yeah, 2020, to prioritize and fast track our mass production housing builders and take the burden off of our planning and, I mean, our in-house permitting. And it was supposed to free up staff so that our local builders who build the custom homes, who live here and are part of the fabric of our community, it was supposed to improve their permitting time. And I just recently spoke with one and he says that it's still a four-month average for them, for the local builders to get the permitting done. And I was just wondering if there was any comments that you would like to make to see if there's any way we could streamline it for our local builders like we have for the mass production builders.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Bruce Singh. Bryn Stotler with Community Development. This item is basically a re-up of our contract with Willdan Engineering. They provide us inspection services for the production builder environments in North Prescott. They also provide us with overflow plan review services when we have more work than our in-house team can handle. And the contract has been working very much the way it was intended. The inspection services have been the most successful piece of the contract. We have a really well-oiled machine and the Willdan inspector is liked very much by the production builders and has been doing a great job. Plan review has been an issue because we have high volume and we have outsourced to the fullest extent with Willdan and still have some protracted timelines on certain types of builds. I would love to follow up with the builder that you talked with so that we can see if there's a particular issue with his projects, his or her projects. But really, this, this contract has taken the heat off in terms of in-house staff being able to get back on top of workloads. We are compressing timeframes on smaller permits at this time. Complex commercials are really the only ones that are staying at that, that long first round. So we do hope to improve those timelines going through the next fiscal year. We're working on it very hard.
Okay, and thank you. And I'll put you in touch with the local builder. He's been here for 30 years, so he's well, he's very well respected and I, I really appreciate his input too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 6F.
Second. Have a motion and second. Please vote. Councilman Sishka?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 7A, please.
Discussion regarding possible development at APN 105-04-217A, what is commonly known as Petroglyph Point under existing business general zoning designation.
Okay. Councilmember Bruce Singh and Councilman Good, if you'd like to lead off since you requested this on the agenda?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I was contacted by a couple of members of the Prescott Lakes Commercial HOA that indicated to me the, there had been a pre-existing master plan for the Prescott Lakes community, land area development going way, way back over 20-some years. And this particular area was designated as a office park and had been advertised and there's been a sign on that property for quite a number of years indicating that that was the intention of to have this seven-acre office park with nine individual, single-story offices on 11 separate parcels. So knowing very well what can and can't be done in the city under our zoning and how we have what's called inclusive zoning. So if property is, is zoned for business general, many development options are available within that zoning. But when there is a pre-existing master plan and a planned area development, that does concern me if there's a significant change of development and use. So my understanding is that developer has acquired all of these parcels, has merged them into one, so it can be developed in a significantly and substantially different expectation for, for building. So I offered to have the representatives from this development come forward to at least present their, their research so that we could consider what the future development in this area can be. And that's why I advocated it for, to be put on the agenda.
Thank you. I have similar concerns. I was contacted several months ago by some members who live in Prescott Lakes. And I just feel that this involves their homes and their property values. And as their elected official, I believe in transparency and I believe in giving them a chance to air their concerns in a public forum. Because as you can see from the turnout, we have maybe 100 people here. And I feel that we need to start a conversation as to how going forward we can keep this a win-win so that everyone can have their private property rights. But if there's any changes, especially in a master plan, in a subdivision, any changes that will increase water use, increase traffic, decrease the adjoining property values, and how it can bypass planning and zoning, bypass the elected officials, and be approved in a back room administratively, I just feel that's wrong. And we need to take a look at it and see what we can do going forward. I know that there's nothing we can do about maybe current zonings, but maybe tuning up some of our ordinances and zoning, because we have a similar situation with single-family zoning and cell towers. People don't realize that a lot next to you is zoned single-family, but under our current zoning, you can put up a cell tower, you could put up a mausoleum, and you can put in a million-gallon water tank. All you have to do is get a special use permit and get it approved by planning and zoning and the city council. So clearly to me, we have some archaic zoning ordinances and codes that we need to look at and get some public input and all work together and prevent people in, in our neighborhoods from getting, I would call it shell-shocked. Thank you.
All right, okay. Bryn or George, would you guys like to address some of what was said here?
Let me go ahead and pop a map up. This is a map, a map of the property. This property has been zoned commercially for almost 20 years. The zoning ordinance that zoned it Business A, which is the predecessor to our BG Business General Zoning District. So this has been zoned for commercial use for some 20 years. We don't currently have an application for this property. So I'm not really sure what other questions I can answer, but I'm happy to try.
Well, the master plan was brought up in terms of something that, you know, was put in place as well as changing the plat. You want to talk about a couple of those items that were mentioned?
Certainly. So the master plan evolved with the M3 companies, who are the master developers of the Prescott Lakes Master Plan. And full disclosure, I worked for them in the past, 2004 to 2009. So I know the master plan very well. Commercial areas were identified in the general plan map as mixed-use areas. Could go either way. It could go commercial or residential. These areas around Blooming Hills and Prescott Lakes Parkway were all identified as commercial areas. And yes, while the Petroglyph Point Office Park was platted with that title, business general zoning does not limit it to an office park use. The Prescott Lakes Master Plan was probably amended four or five times over the years that I worked with it. I think the last iteration of it was in 2005. And again, these areas were all in a striped hatch identifier type of graphic depiction to identify mixed-use areas, which allows commercial, and the zoning has always allowed commercial.
And how did the replating work?
The replating, I believe, it was actually done over two years ago. It was done in 2019, not under the current owner. And the replating simply took the office pads, which had been depicted on the Petroglyph Point original plat, and removed those lines so that there was a little bit more flexibility with development. So it didn't limit structures to those pads, although structures could be on those pads up to 50 feet high. That's the BG zoning allowance for height. So there was never a time when that office park would have been single level. It always had the ability to go to 50 feet by right.
I have a question. This, let's see what here, parcel. There is a possibility for an apartment complex of approximately 250 units. Is that?
I think the acreage calculation determines the density. And for business general zoning, I believe that the calculation for this master parcel is 232 units. It would have been the very same number of units with nine pads or 11 pads.
And just to get that in perspective, our new Hilton Garden Inn is 99 rooms, single, single rooms. So I would assume that this project would be like the Hilton Garden Inn, maybe two and a half times larger than the Hilton Garden Inn on this parcel. And it's going to be right up against single-family homes. And do you think that's going to impact their property values?
Can I interject here? This is, you know, in the interest of transparency, there is no application. This is hypothetical and speculative. And I will tell you that, that there's, there's no plan for anything here. So to sit there and talk about it affecting, you know, property values, we have no idea. There, there is nothing there.
Excuse me, isn't there a meeting planned August 4th with the new owner?
Right.
To present plans?
Today's July 13th, so we don't have a plan to talk about it.
August 4th, there's a plan, a community meeting?
So my recommendation is, is once a plan is proposed by the owner, perhaps then maybe the council could talk about it. But I will say this, that if the plan is consistent with zoning, there's nothing for the council to decide. And, and again, in the interest of transparency, I want to make sure the public understands, Mayor and Council, that they're, that, that they can talk to their blue in the face. But if you don't allow this development under the current zoning, you got to buy the property.
I, I under, I understand that.
Talking about the city.
I understand that completely, but I would just like to give these people a forum here in public so that we can, it's obviously a problem. And going forward, maybe we can make some changes so that we don't have our community and our neighborhoods surprised like this. That's all I'm asking.
Do you have that zoning map?
Bryn, I'd like to make a comment as well. There is no plan.
Everything's negotiable.
You want me to answer that, Mayor? It's sort of out of order, but.
Is this, who's speaking right now?
I don't know. Somebody out in the audience. Okay, so the zoning, not only this parcel, but all of the surrounding parcels is business general. So there, there is currently residential on business general. The business general zoning is a, is a vested right of this, of the, of this current property owner or any future property owner. So the answer is no. There is nothing the city can do to change the zoning on this property without triggering either what's called a Prop 207 claim, which is a potential, which is a diminution in value claim, or a full-on constitutional taking claim, a regulatory taking, because, because if, if this property has value as, as, again, I don't know what the plan is, but just for sake of argument, if this property has value as residential use and, and no value or much less value as an office use, then that difference in value, if we try and change it and force in some office complex, is, is what's called a diminution of value claim. And that's what the city would end up having to pay to, to compensate the owner. It is a statutory taking as opposed to a constitutional taking, which requires a, you know, complete lack of use of the property. So my concern here is that we're talking about something that's hypothetical. We don't know what's, what's being proposed. If there's something that's being proposed on August 4th, and that something involves a potential city council decision, which I'm not sure it would, other than perhaps water district, water, or water service application, that would be the only thing. I'm not sure what, you know, it seems to me this is really premature and concerning that we're, we're triggering potential lawsuits here from, from a current property owner who, who is, you know, and, and with all due respect, Councilmember, this, it's not, you know, it's not negotiable. Because if the property owner decides to build under the current zoning, that property owner has the right to do that without any negotiation with the city. It's not, they're not asking for anything.
Well, I'm just, I'm just concerned that this is going to necessitate increased water use, increased traffic, and it's going to be done without any discussion or public input. That's what concerns me. And I think that maybe we need to have a discussion with ourselves and with community development and with the people of this town and say, you know what, this is not right and we need to change it going forward.
Well, then I guess my sugge-
Let's have order in the chamber, please.
You know, during some other, other item discussions over the last month and a half that some people may have heard about, we had talked about, Councilman Blair here had talked about, we need a, a sort of review committee for the Land Development Code to look at the thing and to see if it needs to be updated and made more current and those kinds of things. So if you're going to talk about this thing sort of globally, rather than this particular issue, you want to talk about things that you'd like to see in the code that we can, that are legally, the change in the Land Development Code that are legally defensible, then I, my suggestion is, is that needs to, that belongs in what Councilman Blair was suggesting, which is a process to take a look at redoing, amending, whatever you want to call it, the Land Development Code to update it as the, as ultimately the council sees fit. So that's my recommendation. I, I, you know, and that's perfectly within your purview to do that. So long as we don't, we don't change the zoning or change the uses allowed in certain zonings that would constitute some type of takings issue. So that would be something we'd have to keep checking as we go through. But that, that's, that, your suggestion is perfectly within your purview to do is to take a look globally or holistically at the Land Development Code and fix, quote unquote, the problems that you, that the council thinks exist.
Thank you.
Mr. Palladini, can you also explain, there's many, many people that are not aware of this property, private property rights initiative that changed the state constitution, referenced this Proposition 207. And that definitely handcuffs communities to be able to reduce zoning use without having to compensate the owner.
Right, so.
That's a very pertinent here, and I think a lot of people aren't aware of it.
Right. So it's actually statutory change and it gives people a, a claim against the city. And so the, the consti-, the, the, the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution, I don't mean to get too, too pedantic here, but it guarantees, you know, or prohibits regulatory takings. But the, but the case law says that a regulatory taking exists only when the regulation essentially removes all available uses to the property owner. So if, if there are still some uses left, it doesn't, you know, and you, you change the zoning or reduce the number of uses, but there's still some viable uses left, it doesn't amount to a constitutional taking. So about 15 years ago, give or take, the state legislature decided, well, that's not good enough. We need to adopt this statute that gives, that, that covers that gap, that diminution in value, even though there are some uses left on the property. The state legislature adopted a law that said, if a city adopts a land use regulation, then, and that affects a property, and it's adopted after the property owner acquires the property, and that land use regulation diminishes the value of that property, that, that property owner has two choices. Demand that the city rescind the regulation as to that property or pay a diminution, pay the, the value of that's, that's diminished. So if a property is worth a million dollars under this zoning and a half million dollars under that zoning, that $500,000 is the diminished value. So that's, that's what you're kind of stuck with. It's, you know, sort of a Hobson's choice, I guess.
In every development agreement, the developer applicant waives his private property rights, Prop 207.
Well, they waive the claim for diminished value in the event they make.
Because they know an annexation is going to increase their value.
Where the applicant voluntarily rezones. And if they bet wrong and the property value goes down after that, they don't have a claim against the city. So it's kind of a circular thing, but, but for the most part, most people who get into it don't bet wrong and it becomes almost a pro forma kind of requirement.
So Prop 207 doesn't apply to the single-family homeowner or neighbor? If he suffers a diminished value?
It's, it only, the, the, the diminution in value claim applies when, to the property that's regulated. So, so, and this, I think there's kind of common confusion. And that is if the city, let's say the city were to go through a rezoning, an upzone or, or change zoning on a piece of property, and the neighboring properties all say, well, now by property values are down because you changed the zoning on Property A and Property B, C, and D say by property values are diminished, they don't have, as a matter of law, a claim under that, under that statute, that Prop 207 statute, because it's only the property that's affected by the regulations. So a rezoning or a change, or even a change in the Land Development Code text, you know, and if you do that, you may have a citywide, you know, or at least all of the, you know, let's say you take Business General and you say, no nightclubs allowed in Business General anymore. Well, every property that has a Business General zoning could say, well, now you've taken away a use and now my property value is diminished, even though all the people who were adjacent to the Business Zone, Business General zoning might go, great, no nightclubs, now I won't have, have to hear music all night long, or something like that. So my property value's increased. So there is that, that's the tension that you have to kind of decide is, you, you know, you, you want to, you, you have to protect the city's assets because there is a claim against the city under that. And you also want to try and protect, you know, neighborhoods and other people's property values, so, but you have to balance those. So again, I just have to stress, you have to be really careful in this discussion because, because I, I don't want to give anybody the impression that this city, at this time, can change the zoning on that property or take away those uses that are allowed. And do you have that other slide, Bryn, that shows all the uses?
Oh yeah, that's a good one.
It's, it's important for people to see that.
John, just let me ask you this question. If, in your mind, if one or two of these is removed, that triggers an issue with 207?
It could. I mean, it could. It all depends on.
And that's the risk you're running, right?
So, so for instance, in that, let's say we're, let's talk about this particular property. If you take away motorhome storage, I mean, well, maybe that's not a good example. I don't know. If you take away one of those, maybe laundromat, car wash, dog wash, that probably wouldn't diminish that particular property because it's probably highly unlikely somebody's going to do that up there. But on the other hand, maybe nightclub or, or theater or retail. going to do that up there. But on the other hand, maybe nightclub, or theater, or retail, you know, grocery stores, those... If you take away that, that may have a diminution value. And that becomes one of those sort of, I call it the battle of the experts. They get their expert to say it's diminished this much, and we get our expert to say, no, it hasn't. And then ultimately, a jury decides on if there's a diminution, and if there is, what's the amount, and that's what the city ends up having to owe to the property owner.
Under the current BG across-the-city limits, you can do duplexes and residential housing.
Go back one, or the one slide, Bren?
Okay. So your concern, too, would be not just this location, but if you took out residential uses or multifamily everywhere in BG zoning, everybody that had the right to do that before would potentially petition the city and say, you have now diminished my property value. Is that the risk?
That's the risk. If we go from sort of what's probably more unusual, which is our inclusive zoning, to what's more common, which is exclusive zoning, you can only do what's allowed in that zoning, we run the risk of taking a lot of value away from a lot of property owners, who then each has a claim against us for that diminished value. So again, but when we're talking about the bigger picture of revising the land development code, those are the things that, when we go through it, we need to be very cautious and intentional in making our decisions, so we don't create diminished values.
I keep hearing about grandfathered, grandfathering in this, grandfathering in that. Would this be a case where if we changed the zoning criteria, everything that was already BG would just be grandfathered in? But going forward, if, like, say we did another annexation, you know?
No, because, well, technically, it's called a legal non-conforming use. We don't really use grandfathering, but only if the use is there. So if there is a... Let's say there's a hotel motel on some BG-zone property, and we take hotel motels away from that, that hotel motel use continues to, can continue to operate there as what's called a legal non-conforming use or grandfathered. But it's all of the undeveloped BG zones or parcels that may have a claim, because now you've diminished the value, because I have one less use. So again, when we go through the revision, if you will, of the land development code, those are policy decisions that need to be made on what you want the zoning districts to look like. But at the same time, we have to be sort of, like I said, methodical when we decide what we might take out or what we might add back in, because if you take something out and add something in, it may balance out.
Well, what disturbs me is the fact that this can bypass our usual planning and zoning and city council conversation. And is there any way to say if something triggers an increase or a change in water use or an increase in traffic, that it has to be looked at by our planning and zoning and just have a hearing?
Well, it doesn't really bypass it, because the use is allowed. So for instance, if there are certain things that will go through the council, one of them is water use. But again, if you follow our water code and the city code and water policy, essentially, if you're in the city limits, this is a generality, and you develop within the current zoning, you get water sufficient to cover whatever you decide to do. And again, Prescott Lakes is a little weird or unusual, no offense, in terms of the water, because we assigned X number of acre feet, and every time you take off acre feet, it kind of, you just chit down until you get to zero, which I don't think we'll ever be able to do, because they were over-allocated. But point is, is yeah, so that process goes through. But again, and I think we had this discussion at the Water Issues Committee last week, they were... It's a very, very narrow decision. We might not like the development, but the city's decision is water. It's not multiple access issues that Councilmember Good brought up, for instance, or visual aspects or landscaping. I mean, landscaping's part of the water thing. So it's a very narrow decision-making sort of matrix on the water. They may or may not have to do some sort of traffic study. I don't know if they would have to do it for that.
As determined by our traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer decides. And that traffic study wouldn't prevent the project from being built, but it may require the developer to do certain things, like widen roads or insert or pay for traffic signals. So the traffic study just sort of triggers, in this case, triggers mitigation.
But even that's not required. It's kind of-
It all depends on what our city engineer says is needed.
Councilmember Rusing, the traffic study's a good example. The rules of the game in terms of what is required in terms of a traffic study, and when it has to be done, and does it need to be reviewed by council, that's all things that could be changed in the land development code, in my mind, because those are policy determinations. They're not takings. They're just a matter of changing the rules of the game. The thing that I think everybody needs to understand right now is the city staff administers the rules of the game as they're set by this body, and I've said this at multiple meetings. If the rules of the game by this body want to change, change the rules of the game. But in the interim, we just have to follow what we have on the books. We can't pick and choose arbitrary, this case, we're going to make you go through X, and in this case, you got to go through Y. You have to go through what's on the books as it is. We don't get to set that, staff. You set that. You want to change those things, change them. But that takes more than one or two votes.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've heard a couple comments from the audience that we know the plan, and I just want to be clear that, and I will direct you to our council packet, there were no accompanying documents for us to look at, for us to review, because the city has not received an application for any plan, any development. Right now, all we're talking about are basically hearsay, what we're hearing from people. And so that's concerning to me, because I don't feel like I can make educated comments on something when I haven't had an opportunity to review any plan. And Councilmember Rusing mentioned an HOA meeting on August 4th. I highly encourage you to go to that meeting and engage with the developer at that meeting and let them know what your concerns are. But until there's something for us to review, the council, I don't feel like I can make any sort of determination or give you any guidance about what we can or can't do, because there's nothing for us to review. And I'm slightly frustrated with the council members who put this item on the agenda, because I feel like you are misleading these folks and giving them false hope that there is something we can do today. There is nothing for us to do today. There's no decision that we can make today that will stop this process. We are listening, and you're... There are processes right now that we have to follow, and if we don't follow those, we will be legally liable. And we can't just arbitrarily choose to follow or not follow policies and procedures. If we want to change those, I'm absolutely in favor of looking at those and talking about those and changing those. But we can't arbitrarily decide when or when not to follow processes that have been established. And I understand your frustration, and I appreciate you being here today and taking an interest in what's happening in your community in your neighborhood. But you have to understand that today, there are limitations on what, one, we've been able to review, and, two, what we can do today at this dais. And we are listening to you. We are allowing you the opportunity to be here and to engage in this public format. That's not my decision.
I'm just trying to start the conversation. So thank you.
Well, starting the conversation and listening, I think, are two different things when you're talking about law. And I'll have to say, I was on this dais when this plat was approved. And everybody, when I walked and laid the golf course out and helped approve a very fine community, there wasn't one disgruntled person that didn't like this plan. Prescott Lakes is a beautiful-
We're going to have to have order and decorum here if you want to be here. So when someone at the dais is speaking, please be quiet and let them speak.
The only point I will make is the fact of the matter, since anybody has purchased a home in that area, the zoning has not changed. Those uses have not changed. I can say buyer beware, but if you're going to buy a house, you need to know what the zoning is around you. That's been in place for 20 years. Now, all of a sudden, we have a cry out from the public, how can you change this? Okay, we can change it for the next time, but we can't change this one. But the next time, 20 years from now, somebody didn't read their plat or asked their developer what the zoning was, sure, it's owned commercial, but you see what those commercial uses are. We can't arbitrarily change those. You're asking us to do something we can't physically do. Sam Steiger tried to do that with residential properties, because people that had houses in RA 18 didn't like being right up to RA 9. So he sweepingly went out there and said, okay, we're going to make them RA 35 lots. We got sued. We lost. In law, you cannot go back and arbitrarily change a zoning district. So I'm sorry you're angry, and we're more than glad to listen, but we can't change that. The best thing you can do is work individually with the person that owns the property and try to have them do something to your liking. That's the best I can say.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, I understand your frustration living, you know, maybe adjacent to this or near this property, and there's the possibility of this long list of things that could be there. But again, that hasn't changed for decades. It's been there since Prescott Lakes was annexed into the city. I don't like the fact that people were misled, possibly by real estate professionals or others that might have told people that there was going to be something like an office park there and limited to just that. But that's not true. Business General allows lots of different uses, and we have to be very careful to follow the law. We have done nothing here to change Business General or anything about the nature of this property at this time. I'd like to give Councilman Sishka an opportunity. I know he's out there and probably has something.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. You know, I remember back when Prescott Lakes first started, there was supposed to be a big grocery store out there and a shopping center, and that didn't happen either. I don't know what's in that spot right now, but I would imagine that it's something, and probably something different than what everybody envisioned. I would have loved to have seen a shopping center out there. That would keep those folks there in their community. They wouldn't have to drive to go get groceries. But realistically, we've got to be upfront about this, and I agree with Councilman Blair. I understand your frustration, folks. You may think that I don't, but I do. But we're limited to what we can do, and we don't even know... I mean, I got to be honest with you. I don't even know what the developer's proposing. Apparently, you do. But, you know, it's like Blair said and the mayor, you need to work with the developer to try and find common ground. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Rusing?
I just have one comment for Bren. We're talking about a master-planned community, and so all the residents need to beware that the master plan is just a kind of a general idea. It's not legally engraved in stone. It's just kind of like, well, this is what we have here. We might have a shopping center over here, and then the next day, it could be residential. He could just get it changed. And so it's kind of fluid, and it goes with the market, you know, whatever the property owner wants to do that he can make the most money at. And so a general plan, I mean, the master plan is just a kind of an idea.
A master plan is a guideline within which more specific plating and uses fit.
Okay.
So one other comment I wanted to make, Mayor, just for clarification. The original iteration of the Petroglyph Point Office Park plat included the property that Highgate Memory Care is on. That also had five or six pads that were ticked out as part of the Office Park plan, and that was also replatted to afford the ease of development for a structure and a use type such as a Highgate Memory Care. So it has happened there before. It's not unusual for that to happen. And the revision of plat itself, just because it took numerous lots down to fewer lots in our code currently, that's an administrative review. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Very good. Are there questions, comments from the council? If not, we can go to public comment.
Okay, Jim Jones? Joann's, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Let me start out with disagreeing with the city attorney. The decision made to take this plat from nine parcels and a common area, 10, down to one, was a ministerial decision made by one of your employees, one of your underlings. The city council can easily change that decision and put back the nine lots that were there in the common area. That will not affect the value of the property. If it does, we would not know what the damages would be to the owner of the property until those nine parcels were sold. And the sum of the parcels may, in fact, be greater than the value of one large parcel. We know that a developer is going to develop this into apartments. 232, I believe, was what Ms. Stottler said. He has developed the exact same configuration of apartments that are going on this property, four tenths of a mile away from this site, which borders on the Prescott Lakes Community Association. Second, there is an agreement, a contract that is still in existence between the Prescott Lakes Community Association, my neighbors, the city of Prescott, and the present property owner. What was done by an administrator in your organization is to make a substantial and material change to a contract provision. It may be legal, but that's not the issue. The issue is what's in the contract. And the Prescott Lakes Community Association should have been given notice so that they could object. Ms. Stottler, if you'd put up that first class for me. You look at this. We have 1,450 single-family homes in the Prescott Lakes community. This property, if developed as the developer would like into tall apartment buildings, three-story apartment buildings, I provided the clerk a handout. I don't know if you received it or not. Yes, no? Okay, well, four tenths of a mile away is a 7.4-acre parcel. This is a seven-acre parcel. The parcels are approximately the same size.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Pardon?
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
There is no reason that the Prescott Lakes community did not get notice of the change of the plating of that seven-acre parcel. There is no reason the city council cannot change that plating back to what it was before, when they made an administrative, ministerial decision.
Thank you.
So something can be done, and done now.
Thank you.
Before August 4th.
Let me just address one thing. A ministerial act is nondiscretionary, as a matter of law. So if a city, if somebody comes in and asks the city to perform a ministerial act, and the city doesn't do that, then the person asking can go to court and do... It's called a special action. It used to be called the mandamus, where a court orders, a judge orders, do the act that you have no discretion not to do. And I've never heard of a city involuntarily subdividing someone else's property. You know, I just, I don't know how the city would do that, and frankly- And frankly, under the state statute, I just don't think it's allowed because, because the state statute, when it talks about subdivision says, you know, property owner come in and ask for land to be subdivided, and this is the process you go through. And then the city code, the land development code has a subdivision. But, but nowhere in any state law or city code does it even imply that a city government can subdivide somebody else's property.
Well, and just as an additional point, recombinations have been given by a body like this at some point, the discretion to be done administratively. For us to now pick this recombination goes to council and that recombination is administratively approved is arbitrary. Either you change the rules of the game and you make all recombinations your purview, or we implement what's on the books. That's the way it works.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to share what I feel is the spirit of why so many of my fellow neighbors decided to show up here at city council today. Many of us have been investing in Prescott for over 20 years. We're generally pleased with our decision until recently. We're joined by hundreds, if not thousands of other homeowner investors who feel the same way. Prescott Lakes is truly a master plan community. The planning was evident from the outset and everyone was fully informed along the way since each change to a master plan affects everyone in the community. The property in question was initially identified in the Arizona Public Report as an office retail site. The Petroglyph Point Office Park was planned as a business center for medical use, using rough timber to look attractive to the medical professional. Development of the office park was underway with six pads under development and construction of the first medical office building was completed. The medical office park was a sound idea considering the nearby senior campus. In fact, the senior campus and medical offices were part of joint parcels in the original master plan. Over the years, we were well informed of all of the development plans and proposed modifications. But the office park plan remained unchanged throughout and part of every master plan update that has been approved. In the Prescott Lakes master plan, all multifamily projects were located well away from the primary single family resident neighborhoods and reasonable access and minimal impact to that community. In fact, there were attempts to change the use of some properties located within the master plan. In every case, the proposals were canceled after comment from the affected residents who rejected the proposals as being inconsistent with the planned community and detrimental to the residents. Each of the master plans have been submitted to the city with the most recent being publicly endorsed by the city of Prescott in 2004. Throughout this period, we never questioned the commitment of the city government to the homeowner residents, nor felt that our investments were at risk. But at some point, they changed. Why and how remains a mystery to all of us. Reportedly, there are plans in place to redirect this office space into hundreds of apartment units, a concept that is incompatible with the master plan and current residential neighborhoods. For example, the density allocation assigned to the parcel in the current agreement and master plan is inadequate to serve this proposal.
Mr. Brogie, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Even more disturbing is that no homeowner resident has even been informed of the development change. How is this possible? Why has it changed? Why the ongoing lack of transparency? Where is the consideration for the homeowners who have invested and are the basis of our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Joe Tome?
Thank you. This opportunity. Let me explain our concerns. First of all, we're not talking about zoning. Been talking about zoning for about a half hour. We're not here talking about zoning. I want to explain our concerns. The, what I would like to go through is the master planning and the development agreement. Prescott Lakes is a master plan community. All of the appropriate sites and parcels are part of the master development. Our current agreement of record dated 9/21/04, it gave us the master plan, integrated master plan as exhibits in the Prescott, in the office park, what in there was plots, was plots one through six. The agreement was, the purpose of the agreement was to provide clarity for third party purchasers of property within Prescott Lakes. It also stated that, and this was an agreement between the city and the developer, okay? And this is what our, the residents rely on as part of the community. All the owners of the property, whether the property was acquired before or after the date of the agreement, were subject to the articles. The specific articles in question, Article 3, the first one is Article 3.2 zoning districts, which talks about undeveloped properties. Well, in fact, the office park was actually in development. It was not undeveloped at the time of this agreement. Paragraph 3.4 talks about densities and that the city only committed to provide water service for 2718 density units. The original 2718 had a Peaks 1, which is everything on the east side of Prescott Lakes Parkway, of 665 units. Peaks 2, which was the office park in the senior campus, which was parcel A and B of Peaks 2, were allocated a density of 150. This is all part of the agreement, okay? That adds up to the 2718. The Highgate assisted living that was mentioned has to be added to the senior apartment complex. It can only accommodate 150 units. The final plats are covered in 3.8, and those have been changed as we talked about. When we talk about plat density, according to paragraph 3.6, the unused densities can only be reassigned by the developer. City can't do it. Another property owner can't do it. Only the developer can do it. So how can another purchaser assume density offsets from the remaining parcels in Prescott Lakes? That's a question. We don't know how that can be done. In the final plats, the, it talks about the preliminary plats, the final plaque can't exceed the, the density allocation on the average per acre density. The senior campus and the office park was about 25 acres. That is a density of six, okay? So by adding Highgate and the, and the senior apartments and any additional apartments, the question is, how can that be accommodated under a density of six or 150 total? So the question, questions that we have, the concerns we have is how do these, how do these approved and proposed developments meet the agreement density allocations? Where's the new master plan with city approval of the added developments? We have the 2005, which adds everything on the east side of Prescott Lakes Parkway, which is not supposed to exceed 665. But the two current proposals, the one that's been, the story is double the allocation and the new, and the Petroglyph Park is also doubling it. And where's the water assessment that satisfies the allocation to the added and proposed parcels? So in summary, it appears that the city is not following the agreement of the allocation of densities for these parcels, which are all part of the overall development agreement for Prescott Lakes. And that, those are the issues. It's not, it's not zoning.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to address some of those? Do you want, hang on, Jennifer. Do you want to address some of these questions, Bryn, in terms of this development agreement?
Bryn's got the better history of it.
To my knowledge, the development agreement had the statutory timeframe of 10 years. I don't know that there are any deliverables remaining on the development agreement. We haven't been operating within the development agreement for a number of years. I don't think there's anything left in the development agreement to execute on.
And I would also say that if there is some sort of CC and Rs or something amongst the homeowners themselves, or amongst the homeowners and the, the master developer, that's a private contract. So if there's, if what's be, is not legal advice, because I can't give legal advice to the public, but if there's some sort of contractual obligation in, in CC and Rs or some sort of development plan that's between the master developer and all the other property owners in there, that's a private matter. That's a private civil matter, that the city has no, you know, we've kind of say this all the time, we don't enforce CC and Rs. We don't have any ability to, it's a private contract. So what we have is our zoning and our land development code. Any kind of other more restrictive covenants that may exist are simply matters of private contract.
So our authority begins and ends with zoning, land development code.
Yes.
Anything outside of that is outside of our purview.
So in other words, you know, as an example, we can zone something with X amount of density. And then there could be a restrictive covenant that says it can only be, you know, half of X. We would allow, as a city, allow for X, but if there's a restrictive covenant that, that only allows less than that, but that's a private enforcement of, of a set of CC and Rs or some other restrictive covenant.
I would ask Bryn, are you pretty sure that the DA only had a 10 year life expectancy?
I don't think that the, and there wasn't a sunset date called out, but generally speaking per statute, DA's without deliverables sort of organically sunset after 10 years.
Well, I just, I would suggest at this point that somebody finds out that information. Because sitting here.
Valuable data.
Well, I'm just saying, as a councilperson sitting here, listening to, I'm not sure doesn't work for me. What works for me is to do the homework and say, without a doubt, this, there is not a development agreement between the city and Prescott Lakes any longer. I don't want to hear some subjective comments.
No, I get it.
It's not real.
No. And I think if the DA has valid provisions in it, that's important for you to know.
Yeah, I find it hard to believe that a development agreement will sunset in 10 years.
Well, if all the plats, in all fairness to Bryn, if all the areas at Prescott Lakes generated, all the different sub-plats have already been executed.
They haven't, they haven't all been executed.
Then there's no reason for any other agreement to exist with the developer because it's done. That's coming from my planning and zoning background. But I want to know, based upon the original development agreement, if we're done.
I think that's a reasonable question to ask.
That's a fair question.
Agreed.
And I think it's a question that her being ready for that in advance of this is, wasn't realistic, because frankly, we didn't know what the nature of this conversation was.
No, and I understand. And sometimes you're only as good as the information you get at the time you're getting it.
Yeah.
And you had no information to go off of. So I'm asking as a councilperson.
We will be glad to get that information. And if there's valid provisions that the city can enforce, then we'll be, that's our job.
I think that's what they're asking us to do.
I'd, I'd like a copy of the development agreement for my own review. Thank you.
I can send that to you.
Very good. Jennifer?
Jim Garing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. I'm Jim Garing. I'm a Prescott resident, Prescott Lakes and Parkside resident. I'm also a semi-retired city engineer for two cities and a definitely retired special district engineer for six special districts. My specialty is water, but the latest bit of conversation I've been hearing once causes me to want to bring up one issue. And that is, I've read through the development agreement very carefully, four times in the last couple of weeks. And one of the things it does is assign the Prescott Lakes Community Association the duty to maintain landscaping on several major Prescott roadways. So if that development agreement is gone, I suggest to you that the association will stop maintaining those roadway landscaping. Now, on to my specialty, which is water. I've been a water engineer for 45 years. And looking at the Prescott Lakes master plan, which clearly designates this property as the Petroglyph Point Office Park, including the original one that is attached to the development agreement. I'm noticing that it also specifically shows pads and buildings. And looking at the layout of that Petroglyph Point Office Park, I calculate that the amount of water that would be used by that development would be about 8,300 gallons per day. Be 72 employees, 115 gallons per day per average dwelling, or per average person in Prescott. If you take another look though, at what the apartment complex at 223 dwelling units on that same property would use, that comes out to about 65,000 gallons a day. So you're not talking about a small increase in water use. You're talking about eight times as much water for this particular property. In my various travels as a water engineer, I've been, I've participated in preparation of a number of water studies and models, reviewed models for groundwater. And I'm interested to know that, that the city of Prescott apparently commissioned a groundwater flow model for the Big Chino five years ago, and it's not out yet. I'm concerned that that is not out because that's a crucial document that you need to know about. You know, I would guess, everyone on the council would know that the Prescott Act of Management Area has been in overdraft for quite some time. And the latest fourth management plan says that that management area is not going to be in safe yield within 2025 because there's insufficient management authority. You don't have the authority to manage the basin to bring it into balance by 2025. You don't have the infrastructure and you don't have the financing to bring it into balance by 2025. The same is true of the Big Chino. Big Chino, including Big Chino Water Ranches, operating in a state of overdraft.
If you can wrap up your comments, please.
Chino is not going to be in balance by 2025. So I believe the council needs to take a very, very close look at its water resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to see you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let you know, I lived here, we've been living here in Prescott Lakes now for, for 11 years. Lived in, we live in the Parkside neighborhood, which is adjacent to this project. Background is I've got a masters and a bachelor's in forest hydrology, and I was a hydrologist with the US Forest Service for 34 years. I'm also the chair of our Land Management Advisory Council for Prescott Lakes. What I want you to do is think ahead to compare a couple of options. If we put in apartments here or we had the medical office complex here, and imagine these are finished now, and I'd like you to make comparisons about what would happen between those two areas. When you look at water, as it falls on the land and runs off, you really think of three different things. You think of the quality of the water, how good is it? You think of the quantity of the water, how much is going to come off that land? And you think of the timing, which is how much water is going to come off and how quickly and what will happen when that water runs off quickly. That all ties back to one basic thing in previous service, service. How much land will not allow the water to soak in and where is that water going to go? Also, it's how much that land is being used. In the case of the apartments, they would be people there all of the time, seven days a week. In the case of a business apartment, a business situation, you'd probably have folks there that would be there for. folks there that would be there for five days a week and not on the weekends. It's a much different level of use. Also, the other thing is there's a large ditch that runs along from the traffic light there at Blooming Hills, drive all the way down to the lake. So there's a direct access point for any water and any contaminants that would run off there that would go directly to Willow Lake. So let's compare the two. Water quality, you would have fewer vehicles in the office park situation. You would have fewer people using the area. There would be less time impacting those areas. You would have less contamination from materials that washed off vehicles or anything else, including oil, grease, anything else that would wash down into the lake from that point. In the apartments, you've got many more vehicles. There are, they are there all of the time or part of the time. Anywhere between 200 to 300 vehicles in that particular case. And so that material then can wash down into the lake. So there's a diminution of water quality compared of those two things. Water quantity is another question. How much water is going to be coming off that land? Water can do four things when we get rain or snow. It can either evaporate, it can be used by plants, it can soak into the ground and replenish our groundwater, or it can wash off and can run off. And so what happens in these two cases, in the office park, you'll again have less building, less sidewalk, less roof, less parking, and less use. So more water can soak in, it can nourish plants, and you'll have less runoff. The office, the apartment, just the other situation there, more buildings, more sidewalk, more parking, more use, less water into the groundwater, less plant use, and more runoff. The third piece of the puzzle is called timing. What happens? How quickly does that material leave the area? It all comes back to impervious surface again. In the office park, the water would stay there longer. It would soak in, it would nourish plants, and you'd have smaller flood peaks, because that water won't run off as quickly.
If you can please wrap up your comments.
And then the last piece again is the apartment complex. You're going to have a situation because of the impervious surface, the water's going to leave there more quickly. You will have fi, higher flows, you will have higher flood peaks and the damage that's caused by that. So in summary, the apartment complex doesn't add up in the aspects of water quality that I want you to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deborah Pernice.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Deborah Pernice. I became a homeowner in the Pinnacle Views neighborhood of Prescott Lakes in 2018. Like most of my neighbors in Prescott Lakes community, I've invested most of the fruits of my 30-plus years of labor and earnings into my home here. When I moved to Prescott Lakes, the neighborhood looked like a single-family residence area, and it was presented to me as a primarily single-family residential community of similarly situated stakeholders. I was lured here in 27 to 18, in 2018, and enchanted with the everybody's hometown portrayal of Prescott. But that hometown, small town, seems to be sort of morphing into the place that I left, like so many Prescottonians. And it is becoming kind of Los Angelized from what I'm seeing here. And I feel sort of betrayed by this portrayal as the small hometown it was, because there's, it seems to be an utter disregard for the existing community and stakeholders. I call this betrayal, because it's a shocking lack of concern and demonstrated, that's been demonstrated by our governing community planners and decision-makers for what is clearly accelerating burden on our natural and human resources and infrastructure imposed by rampant exponential development. The subject development at Petroglyph Park was a small commercial property consisting of a medical office facility, as you've already heard, and it still is. And I never heard about any of this other proposed changes and, or potential to build apartments there until just recently. Now, the property has been slated for transformation into this high-density complex of multifamily residences and rental property with almost seven to 10 times the density of the surrounding residential community. These proposed apartments are about 33 units an acre, and that's almost seven to 10 times the density of the surrounding community of stakeholder homeowners in Prescott Lakes. Now, more development of rental properties are proposed across the street at Predator Ridge with approximately 4.75, 4.75 homes per acre. This is the tip of the proverbial iceberg, as the currently proposed rentals and high-density properties are throwing open a precedent to build even more high-density rentals on the 19 adjacent acres for sale. If these properties are anything like the eyesore down on Willow Creek that are being built by the same businessman, they will greatly impair the quality of the Prescott Lakes community. Thank you.
John Mapes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm John Mapes. I live at Lakeside, Prescott Lakes, and I'm a retired battalion chief. I'm here to talk about public safety. We all saw what happened when there was that accident on 89A. People spent an hour on the Parkway, sitting in their cars, waiting. If you're having a heart attack, something bad is happening, or the fire department or police department can't get to you, that is a major concern. It seems to me that these places are being built, you can't just dump all these people into an existing community and not expect any consequences. There are response times for fire and police that I don't know if anyone's considering. This, like the lady said before me, is the tip of the iceberg. There are more and more people coming here, which increases response times. I can speak for the fire department, not so much about police, but there's a study, it's called the, I've lost it. It's, it's like a review of fire departments that rates them from a scale of one to 12, I think, on how good the response times are. It tells you how good the fire department is in certain areas, where they need more, fire stations personnel. Are these developers being told about this? Do we make the developers come and purchase more police vehicles, more fire apparatus, more firefighters? Do we need another fire station? It's called the standards of coverage for fire departments. Is that being considered? It will give you a definitive piece of paper that says we need A or B to be done to, to allow this type of development, not just this one, but all of them. So just, and my conclusion is that the infrastructure needs to be looked at, not just for this, but as globally as the city. And I recommend a study be done for the fire department to tell us exactly how we need, how much we need. Do we need more firefighters, more police, more apparatus? And if the developer comes, he builds this and he's gone, then are we going to pay for the fire stations? In other cities I've worked for, it's been part of the development agreement that if you build this, we're deficient in this area. What will you provide? I don't know that any developer here is being asked to provide more firefighters, more police, more training, more vehicles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Beau Borica.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. I was going to talk on BG zoning, but that's pretty been, pretty well been addressed already. But I would like to bring up a couple, I was going to speak on the BG zoning, but that's been pretty well addressed already. But I would like to address a couple of things. To the mayor pro tem, you mentioned the fact we don't know what is going to be done with the property. I beg to differ. The property sold is an escrow for roughly about $4.5 million. A little bit more than 3/4 of a million dollars per acre. You're going to have, for him to make a profit, he is going to have to maximize the apartments he put, he builds there to make, to make any kind of money at all. So that was basically why we have an idea what might go in there. Somebody already, already mentioned the fact that those apartments at 2051 Willow Creek Road basically are the examples of the developer lafferty development. And so I wanted to clear that up, as far as maybe you had a puzzle, a question about something like that. Also, I want to bring one other thing up. The undeveloped parcels that border Prescott Lakes Parkway that have the BG designation amounts to almost 87 acres. If you multiply that by the number of apartments that are allowed per acre, 32, that comes up to almost 2,800 possible apartments. As far as I could think about that, 2,800. What I guess the bottom line is, is we don't want Prescott to become a haven for developers to fill their pockets. And just basically, I really think what the people, the residents, the citizens of Prescott really love is respect for the quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Deb Thalassidis.
I'm not speaking on this agenda item. If you want to look at the form.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Cantlon. We're on 7A. Deborah Sedwick.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I'm, I'm new to Prescott, but I am very familiar with government, governance, water issues. I think that we've hit a lot of spots. What I am asking today is a couple of things. One is, I think the city manager brought up some good points. Maybe some policies need to be changed. And I think one of those is impact fees. We heard what kind of impacts and what potential growth should be here, or could happen here. So I think that the council needs to really think about implementing impact fees and what's going to happen as Prescott is exploding. Second, and probably more important to me, coming from the city that I did, we had conflict of interest rules. And I don't know if Prescott does, but I think that any council member, mayor, that has a conflict of interest should not only be excluded from a decision, but also from discussion. So I'm actually kind of surprised that one person is in this room today, since I understand his wife is benefiting from the sale of this property. So, thank you.
Let me, let me clarify for the record. The Prescott does have impact fees. And in fact, it's for water and sewer, for a residential use, it's around $8,000 for every meter, every water meter, which would include sewer impact fee. Second of all, I actually did have a discussion with the mayor about this. And because there's, in my view, at the time, this was brought up, this was brought up as a unhappiness or discontent with the city process of administrative approval of a sort of unplating a parcel. And at the time, that was the nature of the discussion. There was nothing the city council can decide on or have input on when it comes to staff, those staffing decisions. You heard the one gentleman say it's a ministerial decision. It's non-discretionary. Second of all, even if there was some discretion at the administrative level, our city charter prohibits you from interfering with those decisions. So the discussion I had with the mayor is, in my opinion, because the council has zero input on this, at least at the time. Now, that may, that may change if we, if we actually get a look at this, this purported development agreement. And I've been looking for it in our files, and I don't see anything anywhere. So, but that may be because it's older. But at the time, my opinion as a city attorney was that the mayor didn't have a conflict of interest, because there was nothing the council could do on this. And, you know, and the state law provides that, that the, that a, when the city attorney issues an opinion on whether someone has a conflict of interest, it, it protects that, that member who, who, if it's determined there is no conflict of interest, that member is protected. Now, if there is a decision that the council it would be involved in later on, if there is in fact a development agreement that this council has some input on, then that may change the analysis. But at the time, the analysis was, does this council have any authority to do anything? And at the time, the answer was no. Now, again, that may change if there is a development agreement. And at, at the time, we'll, we'll reanalyze the facts. But at the time that the facts were brought to me, and, and where the two council members who put this on the agenda, it had nothing, there was never a mention, at least to me, of any development agreement, any master plan. It was strictly a discontent, my word, not yours, about the city process for, for de-plating the parcel. And, and so that, that was my, that was my decision, and I stand by it.
Yeah, and I would say I appreciate you bringing this up. You know, my wife has listed the property, Petroglyph Point. She's been a Realtor for 16 years in Prescott. I think she has a right to earn a living in Prescott. I make $700 a month as the mayor. And, you know, I, I work, I work in this city, and I take conflict of interest very seriously. And I've consulted with the attorney every time, and I've recused myself at any time there has been any decision made by this council that would involve my wife's real estate dealings. And I will continue to monitor that kind of activity and recuse myself. And so I appreciate you bringing it up. I always ask the city attorney before these items come up, to ensure that I'm recusing when I need to, and I will continue to do that in the future. I take it very seriously.
Jennifer? Jennifer?
Molly Horine. Sorry. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Yay. I just wanted to clarify. I'm the listing broker. Don't leave. I'm the listing broker. My name's not on there. I'm the listing broker. I'm the one that gets paid. She doesn't. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Speaker has the floor.
I just wanted to clarify that I'm the one that gets paid. How I pay Sheila is up to me, not anyone else in this room. Thank you.
Stacy Bonomi.
Bonomi. Glad to know me Bonomi.
Sorry, thank you. I'm so sorry.
I have decided, based on my questions, that these very intelligent people from Prescott Lakes have addressed those, those issues. Okay? Thanks.
Any other public comment?
No further comments.
Okay.
Mayor, I, you know, I always try to look at macro issues and big picture, and because I guess that's why you pay me. And I think we're going to have to have collectively a very hard, long discussion about inclusive versus exclusive zoning. And it's in the future of this community. I don't know how much we can do retroactively, but to me, the largest bone of contention is, there seems to be, and I get it, if I was on the other side of the dais and I was in the audience, when I hear business general, I think a business is going somewhere. And the fact that our zoning allows for residential and multifamily, yeah, I think is confusing. And I, I don't know if the future is, we continue to go down the road, we have. But if we do, we need to better communicate that the rules of the game are what they are. I, I see a lot of nodding. I think that that's something, a takeaway from this conversation and multiple other conversations I've had since I've been here.
I think that and looking at the development agreement are the two big takeaways from this conversation. All right, with no further public comment, we'll move on to item 7B, please.
Presentation and overview from Barry Aaron regarding the 2021 Arizona Legislative Session.
Barry, good to see you. Let's take just one.
Barry, good to see you. Let's take just one minute here and let folks file out so you're not interrupted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would tell you, I'm horribly disappointed that everybody isn't staying to listen to my presentation.
I'll stick around.
Thank you, Councilman Tenney. I appreciate that.
It's a shame we got such.
Probably qualified, didn't it? Okay.
Boy, that's a rarity.
All right, Barry, I think we can reconvene here. Folks are pretty well moved out. Again, good to see you. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much. I always enjoy coming up and giving a kind of an end of session. The session ended on June thirtieth, and that was after a hundred and seventy-one days. It was not the record, but it sure felt like that. Is my mic on?
It is on.
I'll try to speak closer into it, okay? Say again? Is this better? Okay, thank you. I will tell you that it was a very frustrating session, not necessarily as a result of any action that the legislature did or didn't take, but because we had such severe restrictions, we essentially weren't allowed in the Senate. They did all their hearings virtually. They did do hybrid in the House, and I was able to testify on several occasions in person in the House under strict restrictions, how to wear a mask, how to sign in. And if we wandered around even towards the restrooms, they politely told us that if we were done with our business, we needed to leave. But hopefully, that will end. The remote voting was dispensed with on the last day of session, so going forward, I don't expect that will occur. I want to talk about a few things. I have about thirty or forty bills that we followed and worked on very closely for the city of Prescott. Obviously, we worked with other communities, and we work with the League of Cities and Towns and other stakeholders on them. I want to talk about the income tax cut that was passed. It is not quite a flat tax, although it could result in a flat tax of two point five percent if the revenues continue to go up. There are certain benchmarks that they've set, and if they reach those benchmarks by 2024, I think it is, the 2023 tax year, then the two point five. Right now, it'll be two point five nine and two point nine eight. However, no one will be required to pay more than four point five percent because the three point five percent from Prop 208, the education funding, obviously has to be retained because it's voter-protected. So essentially, the people at that highest end would be paying a rate of four point five percent, of which one percent would go to the general fund, three point five percent would go to the education funding that was voted on by the public. We were successful, and I'm very proud to have been part of the team, along with Tyler and all of our colleagues in the cities, of being able to get the shared revenue percentage moved up to eighteen percent. I will tell you that at one point during that debate, if somebody had said, "We'll give you seventeen or seventeen and a half," I probably would have grabbed it and run, but we decided to kind of stay firm, and we were able to get it at eighteen percent. I think between the eighteen percent, the economic activity, wayfare, and a whole bunch of other things, I do think we will be okay in terms of what our future projections are for our city revenues. I know we've had good sales tax revenues and expect that to continue. And I think that as the pandemic goes further and further away from our minds, hopefully, there'll be even more economic activity that will benefit us. I do want to talk about a couple of bills that, on the negative side, unfortunately. So if you'll bear with me for just a second while I pull up the page. One was House Bill 2906. I don't know how much it's going to affect us because I don't know if we had any plans for this, but the effect of it would be prohibit local and state entities from requiring, and the best way I can describe it is, it was an effort to prohibit governments from being required to provide cultural critical race theory training in their offices. And that did pass, and it was signed by the governor. And the only thing that it does is it says, "You can't be required to provide it to your employees. Your employees can't be required to take it." That unfortunately passed. I don't like that, not because I necessarily agree or disagree with the concept, but because I think it was a swipe at local control. And obviously, that's not something that we approve of in this document, which was our guiding principles legislative agenda. The second one that was a little on the negative side, that our city attorney, Mr. Palladini, would be interested in, was in House Bill 2893, which was the Criminal Justice Budget Reconciliation Bill, or BURB. And that was one that added in Section 41, 19401, an addition to what we refer to as the 1487 revisions. And that was that written policies and written rules will fall under that same requirement so that a legislator can contact the city and say, "Your written policies, your written rules violate state law, violate the state constitution." And if we don't make effort to revise them, then they can go to the Attorney General and file an action that could affect our shared revenues. That was a direct shot at another city. And I won't mention the largest city in Maricopa County, but that was a direct shot. It came after some action by their city councils with regard to police review boards. And I think that's what they were going at. It was a policy. It wasn't an ordinance. It was a rule. It wasn't an ordinance. So I think they decided, "We'll take them on that way." There was nothing else that I thought was particularly damaging. I will tell you that with the assistance of good information from the city of Scottsdale, who, full disclosure, as you know, I also represent Senate Bill 1406, which would have made significant changes by repealing registration license tax fees for aircraft. That wound up dying. That was one of those bills where a constituent who didn't like the fact that he had to pay for it went to a legislator and said, "You ought to repeal it," and he introduced a bill to repeal it. And God knows, it got all the way through committee in the Senate before it just kind of died in the Senate. It was not well thought of, and we had a lot of help working on that. I know it's something that would have affected us, and it certainly would have affected my Scottsdale client. The other one that I know we were very interested in, that I worked with Mr. Palladini on, was the private attorney retention one. We talked about that earlier in the session. We were able to stop that. That did get through Senate committees, but after it got out of Senate rules, it stopped right there. And I think that's because people realized that what was being recommended probably was not in the best interest of governance across the state. So, we were able to stop that. Don't know if it'll be back or not, but we'll certainly keep our eye out for it. I have a lot of other bills I can talk about. You've had a long agenda already. But I would like to give members here the opportunity, if you've got questions about anything that did happen at the legislature this year or any expectations for next year, and God knows, we're already starting to prepare. I feel like they stole two months from my summer, you know? There was nothing on June thirtieth we did we couldn't have done on April thirtieth, but, you know, so be the process. So with that, Mayor, I would be more than happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Barry. Mayor Porton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Barry, for making it up here and joining us today. I know there are some budget provisions related to COVID restrictions or local governments inability to enact COVID restrictions. Can you speak to those at all? I'm just kind of curious because it seems like our state COVID metrics are increasing, and so I'm just wondering what those are like. And also, it looks like there were some provisions about any future governor's ability to enact executive orders.
Yeah, that, the bill that would have gone to the ballot, that would have restricted, would have been a proposition at the last minute, that did not make it. Frankly, I'll have to get you the details on what some of those restrictions are. Many of them relate to education, have to do with requirements of masks for K-12 education, and we'll get you a copy of that bill. But I will tell you that in an emergency, a pandemic, something that we hadn't seen in literally a hundred and one years or a hundred and two years, the fact of the matter is, is that asking a deliberative body to declare emergencies is probably antithetical to success. You may not have liked the governor's order, executive order. He issued, I think, sixty-five executive orders over the course of the next year. There were some of them that I liked and some of them that I didn't like. But I will tell you that had they been debated in a deliberative body, we would all be dead of the pandemic by now, with all due respect. You know, I just think that having an executive, now putting some limitations on and putting some timeframes on, the governor's executive order declaring an emergency is still in effect right now. My belief is that it is in effect because there are a couple of bills that were passed that were dependent upon the executive order declaring an emergency being in effect, and then they're retroactive back to last, a year ago, March. So I think that's probably why they're remaining in there. But do we still need that emergency order? I don't know. I talked to a gentleman in Miami a couple of hours ago. I'm going to a meeting there next week. And one of his medical professionals told him that they were at their, one of their hospitals down there, and that the number of people who are in there with COVID, well, last week was five, and this week it's twenty-five. And half of them have been vaccinated. Now, he did say that the people who have been vaccinated, their symptoms are very, very much less severe than the people who haven't been vaccinated. I'm not advocating for vaccination or not. Don't get me wrong. What I'm saying is, obviously, there have been variants that have come up and mutations that have come up, which could mean we still have the virus hanging around, and we don't know. Most medical professionals will suggest that if there's going to be another wave, it's likely to come in October or November. But if you would like, we'll get you that bill.
Councilman Roosing?
Thank you. As you know, the state's in the grip of a terrible drought, excessive heat. Are there any bills, do you have any information on water, anything affecting water policy?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Roosing, I will tell you, there was some significant activity in water. Again, full disclosure, I represent the Municipal Water Users Association, which is the ten cities in Maricopa County that are fed by the Central Arizona Project. We passed two bills that were very important. Number one is a streamlining of the Water Banking Authority, which means that in cases of an emergency declaration where there is a severe water shortage, those cities who have banked water have a smoother, more refined way of being able to go to the Water Banking Authority and get access to that much faster, much more efficiently. That was passed. It was a bill passed that the city of Goodyear, city of Tucson, Metro Water Company, and the city of Scottsdale got passed that extended the time by twenty-five years to complete their current remediation programs. We need that water. We need that remediated water for a variety of uses, and that was extended for another twenty-five years. In both cases, I will tell you, I compliment the legislature that they did it before they had to do it, and therefore, we're positioned well for it, and we will not have to worry about coming in for an emergency measure to get something done. In addition to that, in the budget, there were some very generous increases in the budget of the Department of Water Resources, including staffing, including the staffing increases of some very key engineers and water engineers and water experts, who the Department of Water Resources now has to compete with the private sector to keep those people on staff. So they did very well on those. AMLINE cooperation with Western Growers and the Southern Arizona Water Users Association and the Northern Arizona Waters Users Association, which I believe Prescott is a member of, conducted five vetting forums on water legislation. And most of the legislation I just discussed with you actually went through those vetting forums. We did one in August, September, October, November, December, and January while they were already in session. So, there is a lot of activity going on there. There are some other water bills that didn't make it to the end. But I will tell you that water is clearly something of which there is high cognizance among the members, and I appreciate you asking the question.
Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
Thanks, Barry. Good to see you.
Nice to see you, sir. Thank you.
Rough session down there.
It was a rough session.
Very, very long one, too.
Not one I'd like to repeat.
Wasn't there a variation of the 1487 bill that had the ability for any legislature to be able to challenge some local laws or ordinances? There was some variation of that that went through or not?
Yeah, that was what Mayor and Councilman Wood, that's the one I was referring to earlier. And it was, let me pull out my card. We were making notes as we were driving up here. That was in House Bill 2893. And that was the provision that was added by the Kavanaugh Amendment that would amend Section 41, 19401. Did you get that, John? Because it would now extend it to, quote, "written policies and written rules." And that was, quite frankly, that was intended to go after an action that occurred at the Phoenix City Council. Those were the changes.
So it did get enacted?
It did get passed, yes. It was in the budget reconciliation, the corrections budget reconciliation bill.
And is that something that we're going to try to repeal or something in the next legislative session?
Councilman Wood, we've been trying to get people interested in repealing what was known as 1487 ever since the day before it passed. And I'll tell you, it's a tough battle with the current membership of the legislature, but even more importantly, with the current governor. I think the governor would be hard-pressed to sign a bill that repealed the 1487 provisions. So, it's always on our list of things we'd like to address. I think it's going to have to be the type of thing where we're going to have to do it at the appropriate time.
And I also understood that the annual one million dollar contribution to the PSPRS impact for hotshot survivors or families was also approved. Is that subject to these skinny budgets being temporarily suspended? Or we can expect that to continue to go forward until it's completed?
No, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Wood, that has been, when we worked with Senator Fan on that, when Noel Campbell was the one who helped to initiate that, I think it was three years ago, Tyler? Does that sound right? I think this is year three of the million dollars. That was baked into the base. That is in the governor's base. That's in Joint Legislative Budget Committee's base. When they talk about a skinny budget, you've heard the term in Washington, "budget reconciliation." So when they don't pass a budget, what they do is they pass a resolution that says, "Last year's budget is now next year's budget." So whatever was in the OSPB governor's budget recommendation and had been in the previous year, and whatever was in the JLBC budget recommendation that had been in the base the previous year is in, and that's why the million dollars will continue on there. It was actually put in, when it was originally put in, you can see it on the sheets, on the long-term sheets. It's a million dollars a year through fiscal, whatever that fiscal year is.
Twenty-seven or something.
Something like that, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Other questions, comments from the council? Yeah, Michael?
Barry, you know, you were not here earlier, but the city council did the heavy lifting and got this four hundred and seventy-four acres for the Granite Dells Park and Preserve. And I've heard bandied about, and Councilmember Roosing brought it up earlier, the idea of a regional park. And I know that it had momentum to get some state assistance, and maybe the state would help pull down some additional property. I just want to put it on your radar that, once again, locally, we did the heavy lifting, and if somebody wants to help us and expand what we did... and if somebody wants to help us and expand what we did, we'll be more than gracious and accepting of that, so.
Mayor, Mr. Manager, that's very generous of you. I, I would, I'm sorry, you had a tough meeting, a little bit of humor, doesn't hurt. I, I will tell you that, that there is some money for quote-unquote unplanned new infrastructure that exists in Yavapai County and part of the CARES Act and the Recovery Act. It exists in availability that you actually might have from the utilization. I would yield to Mr. Palladini, who probably has read the 91 pages of rules several times.
Sewer money.
I'm sorry, sir?
Sewer money.
Well, there's a lot of other stuff that's included in that term "infrastructure" that, that could be, I appreciate the joke, but it's, there is opportunity. There's also money there in the governor's office and other state agencies. I think it would be worthwhile for the council or whoever on the council or your office to talk to the land department, talk to Lisa Atkins, and if you would like our assistance in working on that, we are always happy to help. I spent many days with Councilwoman Roosing down at the legislature promoting that, the last time we were able to actually go into the buildings in 2020, so.
And you were invaluable helping me to navigate all the committees and the representatives.
Thank you. I appreciated the fact that you were an active part of going after something that was important to the community, and it's nice to have. It's just like when I went back to DC with the mayor looking for some assistance in that. By the way, that, that bill is still kind of there. Don't know if it's worth anything right now, but I talked to Mr. Gosar's office last week, and we should talk about that at some time. So anyway, with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any more questions. It's a pleasure to represent you folks. I would appreciate it when you invite me up here in the summer if the temperature could be a little bit lower than 98 degrees. That'd be greatly appreciated, but we did enjoy the rain shower on the way up.
Oh, good.
Peace.
Yeah, it does bring rain when it's hotter and humid like that, I apologize. Well, thanks for being here and thanks for representing us. You do a great job. Appreciate you, Barry, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and we'll look forward to visiting with you again next time we do the strategic plan revisions.
Yes, thank you. All right, let's move on to item 7C, please.
Adoption of ordinance.
Hey Mayor, this is Steve Sisko.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Is there any way that we could move 7E up to the next item? It's, it's an hour later here in Montana, and my life is not my own up here, so.
Yes, you're in a different time zone. Well, I think we can flex with that to accommodate your, your schedule there. We could go to 7E and then come back to 7C. So let's go to item 7E, Jennifer?
Adoption of ordinance number 20211767, proving city contract number 2022-008, an amended and restated lease agreement with Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated for the Prescott Rodeo Grounds.
Very good. Now I will declare conflict and recuse myself of this time.
Okay, I need to finish that. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the enter, the entering into of that certain Prescott rodeo grounds amended and restated lease agreement by and between the city of Prescott and Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated for the lease of the Prescott rodeo grounds and authorizing the mayor, pro temp and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase.
Thank you, Jennifer. John, are you setting the table for us?
Well, I can. We, we've had this discussion about the lease in both an executive session and a study session. We did add a provision to the lease. Is that me? Or is that a bear up in Sisko's neck of the woods or something? Maybe that's why he needed to get, get this done. We did add a provision that talks about the, that the, we added a provision to the lease that talks about the expenditure of gross proceeds by Prescott Frontier Days. You know, we defined that in the agreement, has to be used for maintenance, operation, and capital improvements to the Prescott rodeo grounds. So the, the gross proceeds can't be used anywhere, generated off the, off the rodeo grounds can't be used anywhere but on the rodeo grounds. And other than that, I, I can answer any questions or address any issues, but we've talked about this twice now.
Okay, questions or comments from council? Councilman Good?
Thank you very much. Excuse me. I want to first say that I, I absolutely love the rodeo. I've gone to it every single year that I've been able to, and it's just a wonderful iconic opportunity for this community to be connected with the world's oldest rodeo and to have it ongoing for so many, many years, and hopefully many, many more. However, and I did send this to the city manager and this, and Mr. Palladini, after looking more thoroughly at the proposed contract and comparing it to the previous contract, I just cannot support this in its current form. Prescott Frontier Days shall have the sole and absolute right to control the leased property for any lawful purpose, including but not limited to all the previous activities listed in the 2016 lease, but adding concerts, RV park fare, carnivals, and more. So it really opens up the operations to such a wide number of activities. That really concerns me on how the operations are going to be used over the course of any particular year and the impact of the community and the residents nearby. I think Section 12 is particularly concerning where it says alterations and improvements of leased property. PFD shall have the right to build or construct new facilities as well as remodel, redecorate, rebuild, or make additions, improvements, or replacements of existing facilities for all or any part of the leased property as PFD may deem desirable in its sole and absolute discretion and without the need for city consent. In the previous lease, at least there was a requirement that the city is, would be in concurrence with these proposals. This, this gives complete control to PFD for 50 years to do what they want to do with their sole and complete and absolute discretion. I think that is a conversion of city assets that is so broad that it's just not acceptable because, quite frankly, the public is going to expect us as the city council to be making sure that these improvements, leases, whatever, are in the best interest of the community, and this takes it away from us. So without any oversight of the city's elected representatives, the public would expect us to be accountable for the impact, and we would lose that ability to do so. So general provisions, the lease terms. 30 years with two 10-year options for extension, 50 years total. Previous lease was 25 years with one five-year extension option, 30 years total. And the previous lease required a master plan developed by the city within five years but was not prepared or completed or reviewed by the council. Instead, this radically new lease was proposed. General concerns. Will this substantial change in operations and revenue and salary and compensation increases alter PFD's 501(c)(4) status? That's questioned in my mind, particularly since the best that I could find after researching a number of different areas, that PFD's IRS 990 report is, is two years in arrears. So that's important to know how the current PFD is operating, what the extent of compensation is, and whether additional compensation, particularly with this new business development manager's contract, whether that has impact on their status as a 501(c)(4). So the mayor's contract as a new business development manager and any future managers in this position, how can he represent the city's interest as the landlord and PFD as a tenant at the same time? So I don't think there's any way to be able to approve this without having a clear understanding of how that contract works. I think the contract terms must be disclosed so that we can determine current and how future managers holding this position would impact their ability to make these changes to the, the property, the capital improvements, et cetera. When PFD will report gross receipts within 60 days of year-end and pay 5% of the gross revenues over 1.5 million, but no more than 125,000, can we actually expect these reports to be on time if their 990s are in arrears currently? But gross receipts generated from capital improvements will not be included until PFD has recovered their capital expenses. See Section B, under Rent A, Page 7. So who gets to determine when this threshold has been met? Clearly, it would be the sole discretion of PFD, and they don't have to pay anything until they've determined that their capital return has been met. And why is the maximum payment capped at $150,000 with no CPI or inflation adjustment for 50 years? We're already seeing a very significant increase in inflation concerns just within the first six months of the Biden administration, and having no adjustment here for 50 years is, is almost unfathomable. Under Section 5, where it says University of Arizona's extension, should they terminate their lease of their current building on or prior to June 30th, 2026, PFD only has to pay $5,000 more annually. Where currently the lease per square foot is substantially more than that, and this would reduce compensation to the city precipitously. Then I've located 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 different typos in the proposed contract. There's so many glaring concerns here, I don't see how we can possibly approve this in its current condition. I would suggest that we postpone consideration of this until these issues have been clarified. Otherwise, we are, we are substantially transferring city responsibility and assets to PFD with their sole ability to determine how and when and to what extent they're going to be used.
Okay, Councilmember Roosing?
Thank you. I too enjoy Rodeo Week, and I fully support the rodeo and PFD, but I do have a few concerns and nothing that can't be overcome. For example, the, the 50-year lease, I, I just think that's too long. I think a 30-year lease would be more than adequate. And I'm also concerned that the lack of boilerplate language for the annual adjustment of rents for inflation. I'm concerned that there's no council approval for the subleases. I'd like to see more council oversight. I know this is a very friendly lease, but I think that in the spirit of transparency and public input, I would just like to see more oversight by the elected officials. And then I think maybe, I haven't heard about any movement, I guess the property's going to have to be rezoned, and I just would like to see, you know, what's happening with the, with the rezoning of that property. So I agree with Councilman Good that maybe we should, you know, not drag our feet, but maybe tune this up and bring it back in 30 days.
John, do you have any responses to anything or any clarification?
No, I, I, it's, it's a, it's a proposed business deal, and it's up to the council to decide whether it wants to do this lease or remain under the current lease, which has another 25 years, for which we now owe, if, if we stay under the current lease, we owe a master plan, which we're, we're 20 or 13 days past the due date on the master plan for the rodeo grounds. As far as the, there, there is now inherent requirement to rezone the property. It all depends on what uses are being proposed there. If, and I believe it's owned multifamily, so, so if, if there's, if there are other uses that are not ancillary to the rodeo grounds, then it may require some, some rezoning to do that. But, but again, that's not necessarily, we don't know what the plan is. The, the agreement provides that on an annual basis, the, the board or the PFD reports to the council its master plan, and at least semi-annually, meeting with city staff to discuss specifics of development projects. All of the development projects would still, are still required to comply with city code, building code, zoning code, and all those things. So it's, you know, with all due respect, it's not an unfettered, I can do whatever I want out there. If, if there was a desire to build a restaurant out there, they would have to get a rezoning, which would come, which would go through the normal process. This, to me, this is a, this is a sort of traditional or standard or typical ground lease. Essentially, it's converting a, the sort of current lease into a ground lease, and on a ground lease, the, the tenant typically has the ability to develop the property. And the reason for the length is simply so to recoup the, the capital improvement that would go in there, which is usually 30, you know, 30 years to recoup investment, you know, and then again, there's, there's two 10-year extensions. So it's, but it's up to the council to decide whether it wants to enter into this business deal or not.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like you to speak to my charge on that alterations and improvements of leased property, where it says in PFD will have the sole and absolute discretion without the need for the city consent. That's absolutely clear.
But it also says that all improvements will be subject to, you know, city, city code and, and, and city code and land development code. All such improvements shall be constructed pursuant to applicable building and safety codes. Obviously, if there's, there is a, if there's, if the proposed use is inconsistent with the zoning, the city, the city can't legally contract away its, its police powers, and zoning is a function of police powers. So that doesn't do that. The city, this is, this is in the context of a landlord-tenant relationship, and it's not contracting away city police powers.
So as long as it meets code, they can build whatever they want without our approval?
As long, because it's, it's in the form of a, a traditional or typical ground lease, and that's normally what you allow a tenant to do to improve the property.
I, I have a question. Is, is the whole property, the whole parcel zoned multifamily, and we have a rodeo ground, rodeo on multifamily property, or?
Might be able to address that better than me.
I'm gonna have to pull up a map. Give me a minute.
Okay, well, Brandon's doing that. Do we have any public comment, Jennifer?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Tom, Kentlon?
It's been a long meeting, this is a short comment, and mostly positive, believe it or not. I've, I've talked to a lot of people about this lease, about the whole idea of the rodeo group expanding what they do, the rodeo grounds being used more, and everyone I've talked to, even though they bring up many of these, these same kinds of problems with the lease and concerns about the lease and conflicts and other things, they're all positive about the rodeo itself, the idea of expanding what the rodeo grounds are used for, and the idea of a lease, if it's a good lease. So you, you may hear complaints about the lease, and you may hear more, but it's, it's those details, it's not the general ideas that seem to be getting any flack from anybody, as far as I've heard.
Thank you, Tom.
Fit short people here. Can you hear me?
Fit short people here. Can you hear me? I'd like to support what Councilmember Good and Councilmember Rusing have proposed to delay this. I don't feel like it's ready yet. You've characterized this as a business deal and yet the public hasn't seen any projections on what the change in tax revenues are going to be. We haven't seen estimated or potential costs to the city. There's been no outreach or collaborations with the neighborhoods. I want to tell you all what happened this year and I like the rodeo just as much as everybody else. It was fun to move to a small town with its own rodeo and the history here. But this year, for some reason, the amplification got turned up. I live two miles, over two miles west of the rodeo grounds. We were in the house with the air conditioning on and the door shut and we couldn't hear a thing. We could hear the rodeo, we could hear the beeping. We knew every time somebody fell off the bull. We could hear the music stop and start and this was at night. I thought, well, why isn't the city noise ordinance being enforced? And I found out when I called the city that it had a special use permit and those were exempt from the noise ordinance. So whatever you do here, and I am supportive of doing something with this grounds to keep the rodeo in place, you do need to involve the neighborhood and it's quite a wide spread. Fairview, some people, there's a lot of residential homes there. The other thing I want to ask is if you had done an analysis on a business deal, why haven't you looked at City Parks and Rec administering this property, doing the enhancement as the city and taking the excess revenue? Why are we turning it over to a nonprofit? Maybe that's the best way to go, but there's been nothing laid out that shows that. Lastly, I just want to say if you're sitting back here where I am, all I'm asking you is to show us clearly what the best way forward is and to involve us. I'm not quibbling about the lease. I am supportive of the rodeo, but I do think you owe the citizens the opportunity to have some input, which we haven't had, into how this grounds, how these grounds work and how it affects us. You could avoid the situation that we had, I think this is the first council meeting I've sat in for almost four hours in about 15 years. So I'd like to avoid that and I'd like to do more collaboration. So I hope that you will consider delaying this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Hess. Say that again?
Ralph Hess.
Ralph Hess. Sorry, Brandon. Oh, yeah. Well, he's walking up. Why don't you tell us about the zoning?
So the entire site is multifamily, high-density zoned. So it would have to be rezoned if it were for alternate uses.
Thank you, Brandon.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm Ralph Hess and I live here in Prescott, Arizona. I recognize a lease between the city and the rodeo grounds could be financially advantageous for the city, yet I'm concerned about the process and whether the city as landlord is getting as good a deal as it should. And a lot of my points have already been raised by Councilman Good and Councilwoman Rusing. The proposed lease asserts future development is consistent with the portions of the Prescott General Plan applicable to the Prescott rodeo grounds on the date of the lease. The current general plan is effective until 2025, when it will be replaced by another 10-year general plan. Yet this lease is for an initial term of 30 years and I understand the current one is 25 years. My question is, general plans are adopted every 10 years and this lease is premised upon its consistency with the current general plan. So why is the initial lease term no longer than the effective term of the current general plan? Rent, as there's no provision for periodic or minimum rental payment in the lease and no security deposit is required. And the maximum annual rent for any calendar year is capped at $150,000 per year. And the sublease and assignment paragraph provides that the rodeo group tenant shall have the right to sublease effectively 99% of the leased property in its sole and absolute discretion. So questions, is it commercially reasonable, fair and equitable to not require periodic rent, a security deposit and city approval for any sublease or assignment to ensure conformance with Prescott's general plan? And to be able to determine the financial viability of any subtenant or assenee? Your agenda memo does not mention any publication of a notice of intent to lease city property at least one time per week for two weeks. If you open your Prescott City Charter to Article 8, Section 11, you will find the city is required to publish a notice of intent to lease city property at least one time per week for two weeks. Have you done that? Please note, the charter does not exempt amended leases. Moreover, Paragraph 1F of this proposed lease cancels all prior lease agreements, which would render this a new lease agreement. My final point is regarding the mayor's employment contract. Employees of nonprofit organizations such as Prescott Frontier Days, which are supported by the taxpayers, are subject to unique ethical standards. Due to the relationship our mayor has with this nonprofit tenant, I urge the council to require Mayor Mingharelly disclose his employment contract so that, so as to, for you to be fully informed of any ethical and conflict concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. Howard Mechanic? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Okay, let's go.
I have two main points. First, since the mayor initiated this lease, future councils can cancel it. This is according to Section 37 of the lease. Quote, "The city of Prescott may cancel this agreement if any person significantly involved in initiating the agreement on behalf of the city is an employee or agent of any other party to the agreement," unquote. In the June 20th Courier, the mayor wrote, quote, "I approached the PFD leadership with a vision to improve the infrastructure of the rodeo grounds and to expand its interaction with the community," unquote. So the mayor initiated the lease. And anytime a mayor approaches a tenant of a city and proposes changes in the lease, he is acting on behalf of the city. This situation means the rodeo should be reticent about making investments on the property, knowing the lease can be canceled at any time by any council, thereby nullifying one of the major public intents of this lease, to improve the property and thereby generate more events and income to the public. The question is, how much of the rodeo's business receipts from this public asset will be going into the mayor's pocket? Before any lease is approved, we need the release of the mayor's employment contract and we need a full independent investigation into the timeline of how this lease was developed. Any future lease should guarantee free use of the rodeo grounds for the world's oldest rodeo. But proposals from other event companies should be solicited for use of the facilities during the rest of the year. My second main point, the new lease is worse than the old lease. You may ask, how can a lease that has rent be worse for us, the taxpayers, than one that is free? It's primarily because of a couple components. You are throwing in five extra buildings for $416 each per month and also giving an extension to 50 years with no cost of living adjustment with a $150,000 cap. Even if you think $150,000 is reasonable now, if there was a 3% annual cost of living adjustment, do you know what the value of that lease would be in 50 years? $2.5 million. But they'll still be paying $150,000. You are a fiduciary for the city of Prescott. This lease needs to be the best lease for the city of Prescott and the rodeo. We need a total rewrite of this lease.
All right, I see some folks from the rodeo here. Do either of you want to address council or any concerns? You don't have to. I just wanted to give you the opportunity. All right, thank you. Councilman Shiska out there in Montana, any comments? Is he still with us?
Hold on. Yeah, I am. Oh, actually, he's, he has logged off.
Oh, okay. All right, any other questions or comments from council?
Just have a question.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let me ask a quick question if that's all right? If we do decide to table this and ask that the city go back and potentially renegotiate parts of this lease with PFD, what does that process look like? Maybe John or Michael, you could?
Well, you know, I need, I would probably suggest that not now, but we go into executive session and get a majority direction from the council as to what, you know, if you don't like this, what, again, a majority. It was what, is what I would have to follow in terms of direction is what is it that you would want for me to reapproach Prescott Frontier Days to change in this lease? And then obviously, it would be a negotiation with Prescott Frontier Days with the understanding that if no, you know, if no new lease is entered into, there is a 25-year lease that currently exists. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's a business decision of the council. I, and just, I'm not going to go into the specifics, but all of the legal analysis, quote unquote, that was given is just incorrect and I don't, I don't need to address it specifically. But in any event, that would be the process. It would be, I would, because obviously you don't want to, you don't want to negotiate publicly on business terms. So recommendation would be at some point in the near future, go into a exec session, get a majority direction, a council majority direction, and then go renegotiate the current lease and see what we, you know, see what Prescott Frontier Days would agree to.
Thank you. Good information.
All right, well, then I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the decision on this new lease for 30 days and in the interim, we have a scheduled executive session to suggest potential acceptable amendments or changes to the lease as proposed.
Second.
Okay, I just would like to make a comment before we vote. So we'll schedule, it sounds like if this motion passes, we'll schedule an executive session. I'm not sure why it has to be 30 days if we have an executive session here next week or something and then are able to agendize this again soon. Is there a particular reason for 30 days?
Not particularly 30 days. I just think it would probably take two cycles of our council meetings to be able to have the meeting for our executive session, be able to come up with some acceptable language and then bring it back to the to the council for a vote.
Well, I guess my, my suggestion would be to not have, or to really reduce off-session, off, 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 whatever you want to call it. Have our exec sessions on a regular schedule. And then, and then obviously that would be the 27th, would be the next available of July. Getting whichever direction and then reapproaching Prescott Frontier Days. I'm not even sure 30 days is enough. So I would just suggest that when, then we'd probably have to, because we may want to come back into exec session because we may get counteroffers. So if the council wants to, to, you know, readdress some issues, then, you know, I would say there's no, there's no real timeframe one way or the other because I have a feeling it'll be at least two executive sessions before it's sort of ready for prime time to vote on. So it may, it may be sometime in August, early September, depending on how long it takes to reach in accord with Prescott Frontier Days on whatever changes the majority of council wants to make.
Okay, Councilman Blair.
Yeah, I guess I'm just sitting here thinking about the last time we signed a lease with Prescott Frontier Days and never have I seen this kind of scrutiny. And it's all politically motivated and I'm pretty, pretty PO'd about it. And I'd have to say I would move to not have this conversation until after the election to take the mayor out of the very obvious comments that everybody's made that this is driving this bus. I think it's pathetic.
I think the motion on the table would address that concern because 30 days would be post the election. So.
Again, I would say, I don't know if it was not more than, not less than 30 days, not more. I would get rid of the 30 days if you don't mind.
Take the 30 days out and we'll just get into executive session and be able to review this and come up with acceptable language.
Okay, so I'm hearing that the motion is just to table this item for further renegotiation to bring back at another time.
Time is of the essence.
Well, it's not though. I mean, there's an existing 25-year lease that's already in place. So, so I don't know, I guess I'm trying to understand is, is it mandated to bring this back within 30 days? We probably won't get there. Because if, again, if there's an exec session on the 27th, it's likely to be a second exec session in the second Tuesday in August because between the first exec and the second exec, that's the negotiating time presumably. And then after that, you know, we don't know if there's more back and forth. So.
Maybe revisit it in 60 days?
I guess I would just say we'll proceed forward as expeditiously as possible negotiating. And when this council believes it's ready to vote on and Prescott, and Prescott Frontier Days agrees with that, then we put it on an appropriate agenda, whenever that is, whether it's 30, 60 or 90 days. Again, I don't know how long it's going to take to do this because again, there's at least, I would think there's at least two council, scheduled council days, the last in July and the first in August, where we'll probably need exec sessions. And then after that, see where it goes.
Well, that timeline and that description, I would find acceptable. So if we can put that into some type of a motion that makes sense, we'll put that in the capable hands of our assistant city clerk.
Okay. So do we have a clear enough motion, John, or should we?
I believe, I believe it's just a matter of continuing this until it's ready to be brought back again with the idea that there'll be one or more executive sessions to discuss business terms and the process of renegotiating. So continue it to a date uncertain, I think, is how, is my shorthand, is how I would do it.
I guess my concern is, didn't we already go over this in exec session several times? We've talked about this lease. Now all of a sudden, there's 95,000 things wrong with it. This is going to be just like AED and anything else. We're just kicking the can down the road. I don't really understand. It's a land lease. Either we're going to allow Frontier Days to do what they need to do or we aren't. And not bring the mayor into it. I mean, I could care less if this is voted on after the election. But it says, if it's his job there to do what he's doing, let him do his job. But let us vote on something that we've already agreed on. We've talked about this in e-session, not to divulge what we've talked about. But here we are in a public session once again. Seemingly, everybody agreed to it in e-session.
Well, we had a study session too, just for the record.
I mean, come on, I'm just getting frustrated with how many times we've got to be up here and we move the goalpost.
Thank you, Councilman Blair. I guess from my perspective, I understand there are some concerns and I am appreciative of what the Prescott Frontier Days wants to do and am supportive of that. If that, to get more community support and more council support in order to execute that vision, I would be okay with true and honest renegotiation efforts with the idea to reach a lease that's agreeable in a relatively, you know, expeditious manner, not to drag this on forever. I would be okay with having that discussion.
I think we've gotten some new information from the public since our most recent e-sessions that we can take into account in further discussions. I don't think we're far from where we want to be. I don't feel like this is, we're starting over, but there are some things that we probably ought to talk about just a little bit.
Michael, do you have?
Well, I, you know, I think this all needs to be in the context. And a lot of people, both the public and at this day, have said it, that you know, the city of Prescott and the rodeo have been partners for, you know, a century or more. And this is a minor bump in the road to get something better for the community. We all acknowledge that some kind of mutually beneficial lease arrangement, I think, is a good thing, a good step in the right direction. It's just a matter of what it looks like. And I also think that we have to have context as well that, you know, this isn't a lease with a private sector company that you have to maximize dollars. We have to acknowledge at some point the economic impact of this event and as we come up with terms, that has to be part of the dialogue or at least in the back of our minds. Those are my two cents for what they're worth.
So I'm hearing that we have a motion to table this item to a date uncertain to renegotiate the lease. And we have a second, that's from Councilman Good. We have a second from Councilwoman Rusing. So I believe at this time, we will vote.
You have, Shiska's not here, so you have five, so a majority. You have, Shiska's not here, so you have five, so the majority is three.
Okay. Okay. Please vote. Move.
So it passes 5-0.
All right. I think now we're back on, what are we doing? Item C. Mark, you want to get us going?
Okay, hold on one second. I gotta scroll back. Okay, 5C?
Seven. Isn't it 7C?
I'm sorry, 7C.
We've been in here for days, forever.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-1761, setting the fiscal year 22 city property tax levy. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, levying upon the assist valuation of the property within the city of Prescott, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue providing funds for the general municipal expenses for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2022.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor and Council, Mark Woodfill, Budget Finance Director. On the 22nd of June, we had a public hearing related to the property tax levy, which is before you today to adopt. It was part of the budget that was brought forward. The levy for 22 will be $1,875,215. It will represent a reduction in the property tax rate for the city of Prescott on the property tax bill from .2484 to .2378. Again, with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions, but we've looked at this at the workshops. We looked at it in the public hearing.
Thank you, Mark. Councilwoman Rusing?
Thank you. I'm a fiscal conservative, and I just want to make it perfectly clear that this is not a tax increase, is it?
No, it's actually a 4% reduction in the tax rate. I mean, obviously, there's an issue with levies going up, or, I'm sorry, valuations going up, as Sue Manjore just said. The only increase in our levy was related to new construction added to the tax roll. So any new houses were added to our levy, but other than that, we did not raise the taxes.
Other comments from the council?
May I move to adopt ordinance number 2021-1761?
Second. So I have a motion and second. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. Please vote.
Okay, passes 6-1? Five, I'm sorry.
5-1.
5-1, yes.
It should be 6-0.
It's 5-1.
I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention.
Okay. And then let's go to item 7D, please.
One second. Approval of City Contract Number 2021-148A1, an amendment to City Contract Number 2021-148, with asphalt paving and supply incorporated for the fiscal year 21 pavement rehabilitation project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Stewart, City of Jerr. Today, we are coming to council to request an amendment to the FY21 Pavement Rehabilitation Project contract for additional expenses incurred for unforeseen issues. But first, the good news. In FY21, the Public Works Pavement Management Program had three projects. The pavement preservation project, the pavement rehabilitation project, and the reconstruction project. And these three are all funded from the FY21 Street Fund. In FY21, we realized savings on the other two projects in the amount of approximately $150,000. That's the good news I bring to you today. However, on this particular project, the pavement rehabilitation project, we found extensive volumes of clay and unsuitable materials under Smoke Tree Lane after we milled up the existing pavement. And in some areas, we found more pavement than anticipated that we had to remove. These two pavement items accounted for approximately 95% of the additional funds we are approaching council for today. I'd also like to note that these additional monies have actually added value to these pavement assets. So it's not wasted money. It's added value to these assets. And the funding is available for this contract amendment from the FY21 Pavement, FY21 budgeted street fund. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. We've discussed this project before, and I remember something. The problem was that the aggregate was sort of, instead of being gravel, was like decomposed granite, and it came from a pit that shouldn't have been used. Please help me out here.
Sure, absolutely. So in this scenario, when this road was constructed 23 years ago or so, the, I'm sorry, I'm going into a long story here. But basically, the material that was bladed around and compacted was existing native, very silty, high-clay material. And at that point, at Met City, engineering standards. And then they built a pavement structure on top of that. And then over time, people came in, they built, one of the worst things you can do to a street is put heavy traffic on it, because it pushes it, vibrates it. And one of the things that happens during that process is the clay actually starts turning into this kind of a malleable subgrade. And that's why we had to do our pavement reconstruction project. One of the last things we do before we put pavement down is we take the millings, put them in a truck, and then we drive it down this grade. We're going to put asphalt trucks on. And wherever those trucks failed, the subgrade failed, sank more than an inch, that's when we went back and replaced these areas. So it had to do with the existing soils, subgrades that were there from 23 years ago when this was initially constructed, not any other material issue.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment?
We do. We have someone online. Mr. Graff, go ahead.
I didn't have anything unless somebody asked a question.
Okay, you have your hand up. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris Graff? Nope. And you said there's no public comment?
No.
We'll entertain a motion.
May I move to approve City Contract Number 2021-148A1?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
All right. I think we got through all the agenda. The quote today comes from Abraham Lincoln. "With malice toward none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right, as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds." This meeting is adjourned.